Six o'clock, baby. The college work study session for the Bishop's Park City Council to order. If you would please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Well, we're there. Would you like to read this?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll get started on this work study session. Just as a reminder to the council plan, our former mayor who's with us. Because work study sessions are not for taking action, but it's to provide an opportunity for the council to discuss issues with the staff so that staff has a sense of what the council is interested in on topics that will be coming back to the council for for action in the future. So with that, we'll start with item number A, three A, committee appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight's presentation, we're going to cover several things. We're going to cover committee appointments, our potential lift assist ordinance, and CLG and HPC. Committees of representation. So recently staff was talking about this as far as which committees are currently represented, which ones are not. Currently on DRB and BOA, we have Councilmember James. On MAG, we have Mayor. On the Chamber, we have Councilmember Brandon Watson. On Westmark, we have Councilmember Donahue. On Historical Society, we have Councilmember Donahue as well. One interesting thing there is that Councilmember Donahue is the liaison to the Historical Society. Our Councilmember Brandon Watson is actually a Historical Society Board Member, but she is not appointed by council to be on that board. That's an interesting one. If there's any that we missed there, any that we're not aware of, please let us know if there's any missing.
There are some additional items for. We have to actually have to go through and understand which of the activities that the city participates in that are available or we have available spots on boards that we want to be on the boards and have the city have representation, if you will. So there are opportunities to have council members on like Wesmech. There's a laser commission for Wesmech. There's another one for the Australian Community College. Are two easy examples. Wesmark's up there. So there are some other opportunities to be set that council is interested in participating. And the council as general thinks it's important for the council, but for the for the city to have representation on these groups. And the purpose, the purpose is really to get. The purpose of this discussion tonight is to point out to the current council and to the new council members that we do need to have participation from council on different groups that are in the West Valley. So that the city is able to participate in some of the decisions on a regional level that are being made that impact the city. And in the past, we haven't ever done this in a really public way. It's been more court martial than just, you know, asking somebody informally, will you serve this board? Do you serve in that board? So we're trying to make it a little bit more formal process so that everyone understands which opportunities to serve are out there. And then allowing people to make some sort of judgment that they want to participate. You know, as opposed to just being volunteered for at the at a council meeting, all of a sudden you've been appointed. So the purpose is, you know, is to get, you know, to get an understanding for people who, you know. For example, who we've had, we had in the past, Councilman Romack was on the design and heat board for adjustment. And he would just kind of draft it and it was required, you know, that he'd do this because he was a builder and he thought he was the best person on the council to be on that board. Going forward, we 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 appointed Councilman James to that board because Councilman James became available and Councilman Romack. I don't know if he'd had it or it was time to it was time to move on. So probably a long time to eat a hard candy. So the purpose is to try to talk through this so that in January, when we make new assignments, the two of you will have an opportunity to think about it. When the remainder of remaining people on the council can think through it so that we make the right choices for the right spots. And some of them are, some of them, the DRB one is a very important one that has, we have to have a good, strong council representation on that, on that committee. The Chamber is very important. Wesmark can be important depending on what they work on. The Historic Society is very important. So the ones that are up actually up here are probably the the most important ones that we want to make sure that we've got good, strong representation on. And the other ones are also important, but they're they're not as critical that if the city doesn't have a representative, then it's not a big deal. So.
Many of these, we should have representation on, maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't. Again, Historical Society, as I just said, again, currently we have a liaison, but we don't have an appointed council member on the Historic Society Board. As many of you know, this is something we've been negotiating with the Historic Society lease and that we think should be a non-negotiable point, that there should be a council member that's a board member of the Historic Society, a voting board member. I think that's very important, especially in the future. Again, today, Councilmember Donahue is the liaison. Councilmember Brandon Watson is a voting board member, but she's not appointed there by council. And obviously, we want to think in the future, one day, you know, one day we'll all be gone. And especially if there's a long-term lease of the Litchfield House, it'd be ideal to have a council member sit on that board and be a voting member. Discuss that further. Also RPG, there is currently no council member on RPG Recreation Parks and Grounds. I don't know if there ever has been, but in the time that I have been here, there is not. Same thing with planning and zoning. Again, you have someone on DRB and BOA, but not someone on P and Z. And HPC, we currently not have a Historical Preservation Commission. I'm going to get into this later more in the presentation. But if we do end up creating an HPC, you would want a council member on HPC as well. So give me these committees that we feel we should have representation on. I would tell you, it depends on the city how you do these. For example, when I worked on Top Lakeside some years ago, their council members just did not want to attend board meetings. And that was part of my job when I was hired, that I was the city liaison to 14 different nonprofits. And I attended 14 board meetings a month and represented the city. And for staff, you get a great picture of what's going on with every group in the city. But for council, you don't. And you lose that connection because they're they're not at those meetings. So there is a value there to having council members report on different things, what they see going on, having that connection. Again, like right now with the historical society, there's a lot of conversation going on between myself, Councilmember Donahue, Councilmember Brandon Watson, on what's good for the city, what's good for the historical society. But they know that because they're there seeing both sides of it. That's helped. They always have that.
And so it's important with these groups that the council has representation on them because each of these groups, particularly, I mean, you think about Recreation Parks and Grounds. They plant, they plant our parks. So if they go down a path and they plan a park that is something that's just not going to have support when they come to council, then it just ends up with a mess. So you end up literally with a group that's worked really hard. But they've come up with a plan that if we had a council representative, the council representative could probably interject some ideas that would get it closer to what the council as a whole might support. An example of that that literally was the Scout Park. The Scout Lodge rebuilding issue and movement of the of the building and whether they built a new building. It got pretty far out of hand. There were things with with the with the downtown, this new Bishop Square Light Park that got a little over the top. Some things to Scout Park. So it just, it's a lot better if you have council representation on those groups. So that you, the council person can let the group know what the council is likely to support or not support. And and you can bring back to the council a report on what's going on, what's, what, what are we, should we anticipate seeing? So that the council's not surprised by it. And that's true of all of these groups. Historic Society is another example, same, it's the same exact issue. There are things that they can, they can decide they want to pursue or do that may not be supported by the council. And it would be better if they knew that ahead of time. And it would be better if we understood what they were thinking about doing. So that if there was going to be someplace where we look like we were going to get sideways, we can, we can work on that ahead of time without, before it gets to the point where they formally brought something to us or we formally brought something to them that could see the one, either the council or the Historic Society Board in a bad spot. So these, 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 these appointments on these groups are, it's significant and important.
I've been wondering if we have any off, like, I would anticipate there would be something associated with the Air Force base that we we maybe should have representation on.
Yeah, there is, there is, there actually is a, there is a Luke Air Force Base Council that meets once every two months that I serve on. So that is, that is another one of these, these activities. Typically, it's the mayors from all the cities serve on that group. But there are some, some cities where the mayor can't go for some reason, like Mayor Goodyear, because of his teaching schedule, can't always make that meeting. So there will be times when the vice mayor will come in and sit on the council. So there are, there are, there probably are other groups and we need to spend some time just even, even thinking about them. Because that was one, that's one that it's just, you know, I've been doing, I've been doing that for so long, it's just I didn't never even thought of it as something that that the city is doing, but it is. It's a, it's a regular meeting that that we have input on in terms of relationships.
I would also think that maybe our creative group might be one and we might want to sit up and I don't know, maybe focus classes or.
Yeah, there's, I think there's a variety of those that would be good ones for us to consider.
For example, Paige is saying that, um, I'm sorry, the West Valley Partners are asking for a council representative as well. That would be another one we could add to the list.
West Valley Partners?
Yes, sir.
And that is?
They support Luke, sir.
Okay, yeah, that, that's really a, that's another mayor's group, basically, for the most part. And it's, it's a group that was formed to specifically, we, we hire a lobbyist and we have, so we have a lobbyist in DC to work on funding issues for Luke, you know, for Luke that are outside of budget a lot of times. It was originally formed to support the movement of the F-35 here. And so typically that has been, has been, has been the mayor's. Now, that may evolve in the future because the F-35 situation has gotten, you know, less of an issue and now the issues are more about base, you know, base facilities. That could, that could well change.
Thank you. And again, if there's others we don't know about, please, like lending closet. Does it, Councilmember Donahue is on the lending calls board, right? I think she is.
Yeah, yeah, actually, yes, I am. And this is interesting because Mayor Joe's on there. There's a council member from Avondale. They're actually Doug Santrum now, but it was a councilman from Buckeye. So somewhere along the way, they use council, but I'm staying on that and they haven't requested that we fill that. So I don't know if that's changed. And and I don't even know if it's in their bylaws, but that's how I was, I presented was through council, but at this point I'm going to stay on. And they haven't asked me to replace myself. So I, I don't think that that one is necessary. It's just that it's filled by some of the other cities and they're staying on it, but I, I don't, I don't really see a need for that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Donahue. So again, if there's other committees we're not aware of, please let us know. And one, one other thing on these two is that there's advisory committees and there's legal action committees. And what I mean by that, for example, RPG is an advisory committee. They make recommendations to the city. Where things like DRB, they actually, of course, make legal decisions on things like zoning or home expansions, et cetera.
So the purpose is to get input from council and and you can really go in from the community in terms of what things we should be identifying. Get, get a good complete list of these different committees and commissions and groups that we want to have some participation in. So we're in a good spot on, you know, January 1st, but our first meeting in January to go through and make some decisions on who of the new, on the new council for the next, you know, potentially two years, how we will staff those positions.
Well, that's cool. I, I think it's real important for us to kind of stay engaged in some of these committees that we have, our anchor on the full support, going on in the community around us. And I also wondered if we should look at our list of applicants who apply every year for the grants. If we might see some names under our groups on there that we should be.
We could take a look at that. There, you know, those are groups that are, you know, that are important in the community. Councilman James.
Couple of comments there, Mayor, is a I think that we probably should delineate need to have or would be nice to have. Because all of a sudden, you know, I mean, the Mavericks gave $400,000 last year to 83 different nonprofits and, you know, couple dozen come and say, hey, will you put a Maverick on the board? And so, I mean, we do that one thing where we fill out and get, you know, allocate the money via council. I mean, it's a so I would say that. And I would also say, you know, a little bit selfishly here, I'm, I'm still raising kids and I'm not, I know what I signed up for. I know what I volunteered for. I know why I'm here. But I know my two incoming council members are same boat. We're all raising kids and we have commitments and I'm not particularly looking to get over volunteered. Now, that being said, I'm happy to pull my weight as long as the whole council pulls. And so like when I, I look here and I make this list and you're doing what you're doing and I'm on DRB, but when you, when you count, you know, and you take over for Councilmember Brandon Watson, you, you take over as an appointed member on the Historical Society. So I'm looking at, if we're talking that now, we're talking DRB, RPG, P and Z, the Historical Preservation Commission, and then Westmark. So that's five, five, five right there. And I'm sitting here thinking, one, two, three, four, and a vice mayor is five. And I'd be down with that if everybody, I'd be, I'd be okay with that if everybody agreed that we all.
I, I think the concept is that is we're hoping that every council member will be able to be on one thing.
Yeah.
In addition to councils, some community group, and then it's a matter of prioritizing it, you know, so that's, that would get us five or six spots.
Yeah.
And that probably covers the ones that are most needed. And then if there are others that people are interested in and they want to participate in.
Yeah.
That they would do that.
Said, I'm, if, if all a council agrees that we prioritize those as our must-have and everybody's willing to step up and and I don't, I don't particularly have a fleeting desire for which committee to be on. I mean, I did serve on P and Z at one point in time. Feel like a fish out of water on DRB, to be honest with you. So I'd be happy to.
It's, you know, I think, I think if we could get, if we could get, I think on, we probably have averaged one council member in the past. But it has gotten, it's never been well organized. And so we're trying to get it more organized and make sure that that there's a, you know, a reasonable participation from the different, all across the council. Obviously, if you just can't do it, you can't do it. That's, it is what it is. But a lot of these are important. If we can work them in, then I think they're good, they would be good activities. It will further the interest of the city.
And to this point, I don't know. But also it would be kind of used to list maybe on our website and councils, council members, what they're engaged in, you know, so that if someone comes and looks at it, they're like, oh, wow, you're shoveling all these things because and you have an idea, better idea, you know.
Who serves on what?
Yeah, well, who serves on what, because it's not an official.
Right.
Could put it as, you know, asterisk those or something.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. All right, any other comments or questions, Councilwoman Romack?
Thank you. On the Southwest Landing Closet, years ago, there was always somebody from the council on there, I was on there a couple of years. And it's, but all at once, I don't, I don't know what's become of it.
It's still, no, it's still doing well.
Yeah, they're, they're doing well.
We're not, yeah, we don't, we don't participate in terms of being on the board, but
Right.
It's doing well. All right, so we'll work on a list of these activities to try to, to try to get we'll have staff put together in a more formal way and get it out to council so you can help us decide which are the five or six that we want to make sure that we staff and then which are the second, the second tier that they're available. You know, we encourage people, if you're interested in it, you know, to staff. Okay? All right.
I do have one more slide on this, Mr. Mayor.
You have another slide, we're done.
I'm trying.
Maybe not.
Maria, can you manually click me through one, one slide?
You can clap her.
There you go. Mayor and Council on the same issue is a possible council procedural change, and this, of course, is the council procedural guideline document. Basically, just clarifying, this is the mayor was saying, again, this is proposed text. At the first meeting of the year, each council member will be appointed to various boards, commissions, committees, and committee organizations and will serve a term of one year. Upon the expiration of that term, the appointee may choose to serve on the board, commission, committee, or community organization to which they were appointed, or choose a different one. All council members must serve at least one board, commission, et cetera. If a council member is unable to serve due to health reasons, ongoing conflict of interest, et cetera, the appointment may be transferred to another council member for the remainder of the term. Again, this is not current text. This would be proposed text. I think that part B is important. Obviously, if there's a personal reason you can't be there, certainly understand that. As Councilmember Brandon Watson says, certainly with different places in life, there's people that can attend on more committees than others can. And some people are just naturally interested in more committees than others are. So, and just proposed text, so welcome. Any thoughts?
I would suggest in the, the last sentence, instead of must serve, you'd say, encourage you serve.
Thank you, sir.
Those again.
Sir, when, when you do put the list together, Mr. City Manager, can you put down the committee, the location where they meet at, the date, and the frequency? Because that's gonna.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah. Location, date, frequency. Thank you, sir.
And I would suggest also that if we have some place in there for wiggle room to get off of a commission or board if there's a personal issue with it.
Conflict or something.
A conflict, well, conflict to me is conflict, but it could be because it does just say conflict.
Personality conflict.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, personality conflict.
I just want to quit.
We just can't stand this.
Yeah, so put in the just want to quit clause.
Mayor.
Yes.
I was just listening to Lisa or what Justin said as well, because like, for instance, the Historical Society, I think Lisa meets during the week, like in the morning. That could be tricky for people that are employed still.
We will get us, we'll get an idea of when, when these organizations meet and the frequency of their meetings. That would help. Okay, so then we'll move on to item B. Ambulatory lift assist.
Mayor and Council, you remember, we discussed this ordinance a few months ago. This comes up every few years. This is ordinance 24285, ammatory lift assist. The basics of this, it would establish a $500 fee per lift assist where the individual is not transported from an assisted living facility. There are various questions that came up with this. We did speak with Goodyear Fire Brothers. I'll get in that in a second. And council asked that we bring this back into work session, so here we are. Just some basis as to what it says today if it went forward. As you guys know, we contract with Goodyear Fire for fire protection EMS services. Many of those EMS calls are in assisted living facilities and involve lift assist individuals who have fallen. Of those percentages, EMS calls are 25% of Goodyear Fire calls. That's a lot. I would tell you for most cities, it's generally
Eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five, yes, sir. It's generally from my experience in the sixties, sixty to seventy. But the fact that it's in the eighties says something here about the demographics of the city, et cetera. So again, eighty-five percent of the Goodyear Fire calls are EMS calls. Of those eighty-five percent, roughly 27 to 30% are EMS calls to assisted living facility. Of that 27 to 30%, five to 10% were lift assists who were not transported. Just to be clear, what that means is a lift assist that someone had fallen on the floor, for example, and Goodyear Fire EMS staff picked them up, but they didn't have to go to a hospital for further evaluation. And the thought being, of course, here basically is that these facilities should have staff that can do this job. It shouldn't require a call to EMS to lift someone if they don't be transported. If they have to go to the hospital, that's certainly the need for EMS. That's why it's there. But if they're not transported, maybe we should or should not be doing that. In 2023, there were 49 lift assists. Those were non-transports from assisted living facilities. In 2022, there were 35. Numbers vary, of course. Again, that's lift assistance as currently written. That's not in place. We did have a first reading before, but it never went forward because we didn't discuss further. Again, this ordinance would apply a $500 fee per lift assist for the individual who's not transported. Again, this fee only applies to this type of business. Obviously, it wouldn't apply to private residences. It would only apply to assisted living facilities. And as you guys know, the annual cost of fire service are related to our number of service calls. Luckily, we don't have many fires here. It's mostly EMS calls. Possible concerns revisions. One is maybe we do a warning on first offense rather than a, than a fine the first time. How Goodyear Fire did request that citations be handled by city code enforcement versus Goodyear Fire. Goodyear Fire is not in the business of citing people because they had to, didn't transport them. So I think that makes sense for code enforcement. Possible lowering of the fee or instead, like, maybe you want to make it 250. Or I'd be more on the side of making a progressive fee schedule. When it keeps happening again and again, maybe you start 250 the first time, 500 the second, you get the idea. And establish a progressive fee schedule. That is something we can do. Because you would hope that this stops, but again, if it just keeps happening, you don't want it to be a situation where we just pay the fee. And of course, where the revenue is going to go. Just to be clear, we're certainly not looking to make money off this thing. But the revenues produced could fund a lockbox program. For those of you that know what a lockbox program is, that's a program that Goodyear Fire has for people's homes where they can access their homes in case of emergency. Currently, we get this request for lockboxes, but there's only so much funding for this. And this is something you could direct that money toward. These monies could be taken and put toward a lockbox program so that those things could be there when people need them. And that would, again, it's not the city getting the revenue from this, rather it would pay for that program, if that's something you guys are about to do. Any questions on that?
Maybe, maybe some background so that maybe it's for some council that doesn't, you know, hasn't been here through this whole process. So we go back 16 years ago or so, the fire emergency services for the, for the initial part, the residents were supplied under, under a contract between each resident and rural metro. And the, the problem with that service model is that it did not provide a very good level of traditional people. There was, there were two fire trucks that were available. So if those two fire trucks were busy and somebody called on EMS situation, rural metro was not part of automatic aid. So it was questionable exactly who's going to respond if those trucks were busy. So there was a, a real desire to, to get into a municipal system. And we negotiated with, with Goodyear and with Avondale, actually. We, we had, we had an agreement with Avondale to do a joint for Avondale to cover us and that to jointly invest in a new fire station. And because of various economic problems that came up in the, I think it was 2008, 2009 timeframe, Avondale was not able to commit the funds to build the new fire station. So that agreement was, you know, was canceled. And at the same time, we had a, we had an obvious station with Goodyear and, and, you know, station, I think it's 183, is that right? That may, would make a lot of sense for us to, to work, to partner with Goodyear. And, and at the time, that station was not as busy as it could be. And so there were benefits to Goodyear if we were to pay some of the ongoing costs of operating that station. So we entered, we entered into this agreement with Goodyear. And it was negotiated based on a percentage cost sharing arrangement for the station 183. And fortunately, that percent, the basic percent has stayed the same since we started. We, in addition to that, basic framework of, of, of sharing this cost each year, so it changes, it changes each year as the cost of operating the station goes up. Uh, in addition to that, we have certain other costs that vary based upon the number of calls that we have. So if we have somebody who calls nine-one-one from the show park, we pay a fee per call. And there's other fees like that, so when you call in, there are some fees that, that vary based upon the number of calls that are done over a period of, of year. So the concern, the concern that we've had on council since, um, we saw the Loma developing and then, you know, with the assisted living there, and then the assisted living in Hacienda, was that a very significant percentage of our EMS calls were related to these two assisted living businesses, and it was an outsized proportion. It's, you know, whereas there's very few residents living in, in those two facilities combined, but the number of calls that go to them each month are, are very high, they're high in relationships, so if, if on average, we had, you know, six thousand residents generate, you know, I don't know, fifty calls, then those thirty residents generate another twenty. It's literally that, it's that outsized. So I, we have had councils and have, have had discussions on council, how do we deal with this for a long time? I have been very adamant about the fact that when we agreed to take on emergency services for our residents, we agreed to take on this, this problem. Uh, if you need an EMS, if you need EMS, EMS needs to be there and the city needs to fund the cost of that, period. It, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't, uh, work on encouraging way, finding ways to encourage the businesses to act, to operate a responsible business. And this lift assist is, is one of those areas. Now, we, we do have some provisions in the development agreement with Sun Health that if the number of calls is, as they develop more, if they develop more assisted living and, and that, that type of business adds some help, if that drives up the number of calls, and if that, the, the higher number of calls then drives a, a change in the contract with Goodyear, then we're, that's gonna get charged back basically somehow. So that, that's already, that kind of a, is already there. So when you, when, when we're in the situation we have now, uh, trying to encourage both of these businesses to be more proactive in how they deal with this problem of people falling, it is, uh, what we're trying to do is attempt to keep the cost overall, cost impacts of these two businesses down in terms of the cost on, on, uh, Goodyear and Avondale who have to call, who have to go to these calls. So I, lift assist concept, I think is a good one, you know, I, I applaud the staff for coming up with it. But it, it, it is not something that should ever generate a fee for the city because our costs are not, our costs don't change significantly if we have more people calling EMS to get picked up off the floor. So the city is not experiencing today an extra cost of that. Excuse me, it could impact us in the future at some point with, if Goodyear came back and said, well, this cost sharing arrangement needs to change because you have too many EMS calls, and those EMS calls are not, you know, if they're not, so it could eventually, the dominoes could fall where it could affect us, but it isn't affecting us today. So if we're gonna put in a program today to try to encourage the businesses to act in certain ways, and we're gonna put monetary, a monetary fine on them, then I think it has to go to something else other than our general fund. Because it's not fair to our residents to say that it's impacting our general fund when it's not. So if we put it into something like a lockbox program, or, you know, I, I don't, I've, what I have said to city staff was, you know, to work with the chief and see, you know, if we do this, we don't want to do it if, if the fire department doesn't want us to do it, quite frankly. But if they're not opposed to it, and we try this as a program to see if it has an impact, then find a place for the money that's not coming back into our general fund. So that's the concept of the lockbox or something else. And that would be based on further discussions, I think, with Goodyear to try to find what's the best way to use these funds. And, you know, I'm sure there are things that the firefighters need and that we could, we could use funding, uh, like this for, uh, if we, if we generate funds using it, and so that's kind of the background, what's brought us to this, to this kind of juncture, we're trying to look at a proactive, something proactive we can do that will, that will help in the EM, you know, in the EMS area for the businesses to be responsible for their business models. So.
Vice Mayor.
Hello, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, I didn't know Vice Mayor was here with us. He is one of the most interested persons in this topic, so I'm happy to hear you're here.
Yeah, Mayor, you did a phenomenal job explaining it. I agree totally with you that the revenues don't need to go into general fund, they can be used to somehow, uh, support programs or support the firefighters, uh, that are providing us a service through some kind of mechanism for our staff to figure out. I wanted to mention, though, in, in your history, one of the things you left out is that you were probably the most important person in that committee and the chairman of the committee to spearhead this entire fire services resolution. We had a significant
Not relevant.
Yeah, I know. But, Tom, you did a phenomenal job, that, that committee, we, we had a very, very difficult and a poor situation with fire services, and we knew it. And we, the council appointed a committee to look into this and try and find a solution. And you chaired that committee before you became on the council. And, uh, the, the, the solution you guys came up with, and the way this has worked out over all these years, has been astonishing. It has been fantastic. Every citizen knows you have gratitude, thanks, Tom, for what you did.
We all, you know, we're, we're thankful we've got partnered, a partner, a good partner, Goodyear. They've done a good, you know, our, our success in the program is because we have a great fire department. So we need, you know, more direction, if there's other direction to give staff on this, so the next time when they bring this back to us, it doesn't, you know, basically die for a second.
Mayor? Can I? Whoops, can I say something?
You can, I was gonna call on you a second, but now that you're there, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll give you the floor.
Um, so, I, I don't know, I, I have a little bit of a problem with this for two reasons. One, I'm, and I'm specifically not Sun Health, because I think they're quite compliant, but Hacienda now has been purchased by a big group. So how compliant are they gonna be to pay this? I have just this vision of Renee, our, our, you know, compliance person, showing up and there being a pardon me, pissing match between them, you know, we're not gonna pay that, and, and then Hacienda may be passing it on to the actual patient, so that part of it, I'm a little bit concerned about, I think Sun Health is a little bit more compliant with their partnership with us and so forth, I just am not sure, big business-wise now, because they're part of a big conglomerate, if those fees are gonna be ignored or passed on to a patient. So I, I, I'm just a little bit concerned about us administering that.
We, I mean, we have a way to administer code compliance. You know, and it goes through a judicial process and it's, it's very well defined and it works, it works fine. So if you get, if you get a code, a code violation and you owe a fine, it will go through a process that eventually ends up with a lien on your property that can be enforced, uh, through the judicial process. So that, unfortunately, it's not a problem. Uh, if we can't get somebody's attention with the, the fine, or if they, if they, um, push it off on the residents, they have contracts for those residents, and they would have to modify contracts, probably add this type of fine on top of it for the resident. And it would impact their ability to be competitive in the marketplace, so I, I wouldn't be as concerned about that, that at this point. Any other comments? That's what Claire.
So we've got forty-nine lift assists last year, thirty-five the year before. Are, are the lift assists the primary reason for their, us showing up, or their other medical attention? Because if they're doing other medical attention, and it's not just a lift assist, it's hard to just define it as a lift assist, right? So if they go
If, if, if you call nine-one-one, and the only thing that's done is to lift, to lift somebody off the floor, then it's a lift assist.
Okay.
If there's any medical part of it, as we define it now, I think, within the ordinance is being defined as a transport. So if the fire department shows up and they have to call the ambulance to transport, then it doesn't count.
Understand, but if they what I've seen EMS show, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, I mean, they're gonna do a cursory medical check on the person that's there, whether it's blood pressure, or, you know, any of the, the basics to see what's going on, so they're gonna do some type of cursory beyond just the lift assist. So, or it actually
The, the, where we're, where staff has differentiated it at this point is
Transport.
Transport, because that's a, that's a clearly identifiable, there's a serious enough medical emergency for transport, then we need the fire department to be there, period. Uh, if it isn't serious enough for a transport, then you guys figure out how to deal with it within your business model.
So I kind of did a little differently because I, uh, I can't count how many times we pulled my mom off of the floor and five of the, uh, rescue guys came and actually saved her from drowning in her own tub because she couldn't, we could not lift her out of a tub and the water was up to here.
Right, and it's different, it does
It is, it is, but so I come at it with, with some experience of having dealt with this. Um, and I have a mother-in-law who's currently in a facility, not one of the two that in our area, but a little bit further south. And when she has an issue, um, and they've called the paramedics on her, I think, three or four times, they do not have a medical doctor on staff. And so the question is whether or not she is okay to stay and follow up with her GP tomorrow or not. And the nursing staff, because most of them are not RNs, they're, I don't think they even are in on staff, I think they're all LPNs or CNAs, um, which is markedly less training. Um, they are reluctant to say, oh, she's fine, keep her here, don't transfer her because for liability reasons, they don't want to be the ones who said, she's fine when she's actually fallen and and, um, as my dad did, ruptured an aorta. And he refused to be tr- he refused to be transported. It's by grace of God that he was alive the next morning. But they always ask, uh, the facility always asks my mother-in-law, do you want to go to the hospital? And I've, I've told them several times, I think we're gonna have her stay here, and they're like, it's her decision, not yours, if she says to us she needs to go, she goes. Because that's how they, they won't come out and tell you it, but I'm sure that's how they avoid the liability of having made a medical decision, they're not qualified to make. They let her do it. So I, I'm a little bit hesitant. I, I guess this, I guess what I would like to see, rather than just how many assists in lifting, because I don't see the assistant as being the problem, um, or the lift as being the problem, I see the problem being, uh, a medical issue, and I don't know that this is gonna get the result we're looking for, because what they need to do is have a doctor on staff. And they don't have that, and I don't think we can force that with five hundred dollar dings at a certain point. And then my last comment is this, how many of the residents in the Loma are Litchfield Park residents, former Litchfield Park? In their own home? And, uh, if, if it was someone who lived down the street, you know, and the fire department's coming two, three times, four times a year, which they do, uh, in one of our neighborhoods, um, we wouldn't charge them five hundred dollars a lift. We would, you know, so I, I just, I don't know. I don't know that this is gonna get us the response we want, I don't want to see people making a decision for five hundred dollars, not to transport someone who maybe has, uh, a serious underlying condition that a triage by the EMTs isn't gonna catch.
Yeah, I've been through, you know, one or two situations where we've had Goodyear come, and, you know, the question was, is there a transport or not a transport? I have never seen the EMTs ever make that decision, ever. They don't, they don't decide.
No, if I said EMTs.
But I mean, like, my point is, they don't decide. If it's serious enough that they think you need to be transported, they, the ambulance comes, and there's not any question about it. And if it isn't that serious, and then so they're not sure whether you, you know, that, there's no medical reason you have to be transported, then they would allow you to make that decision. But, and that's the point of this, of this ordinance, is if it's not serious enough that there's gonna be a transport, then they need to do their business model in a way that deals with it, without having the EMTs there, who should be dealing with somebody who really needs them, as opposed to just somebody who needs to be lifted off the floor. You know, we're taking very, I mean, you've got five or six guys that are incredibly hu- incredibly well-trained that are there to deal with the guy who has a heart attack or a stroke, and they're, they're doing, they're lifting somebody who, the business model, how to deal with that, not, not the EMTs.
Vice Mayor.
I completely disagree.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I mean, the reason behind this, in my mind, is not to punish the business or to punish the patients. We've learned going through this, through, through multiple ways that, as you call it, the business model, Mayor. But these, we, we have a group of people who are infirm in one way or another, are being cared for by service providers that have very little skill or experience. And in my mind, what I would hope this would do, would be to encourage them to get somebody on staff who's trained, it, you know, maybe something less than an EMT, but still trained somehow. Because I, I, from what we've seen, there, there is no, there's minimal training for the staff that are there. And those people that are, that are, they're there deserve more than that, I mean, they're paying a, uh, a, a premium to be in these facilities, and they should have a quality of care of those service providers that I don't think they're getting. And so my view on this is not to punish the patients, not to punish the business, but to encourage the business to upgrade the quality of the staff. And at least have one person there during prime times who can triage, or who can look at these, this person and figure out what's going on, or whether they need to be transported or not.
Any other comments? That's romantic.
Vice Mayor. Um, Paul, I would, I would agree, uh, in, in the best of circumstances, that they have someone on staff, but uh, we've been down this road, I can't tell you how many times, we've talked about this for years now, and, and, uh, uh, this has always been a problem, is, is getting them off the floor. Lots of, lots of people, uh, falling and, and calling nine-one-one to, uh, to, to be rescued, I guess, you know, because in one form or another. But this is, this has been ongoing, maybe the five hundred dollars, Paul, would be a, a enough of an incentive for the facilities to say, okay, now, you know, we don't want to spend that kind of money, so let's, let's look at, at upgrading our staff instead of trying to, trying to, uh, uh, pay the five hundred dollars each. And maybe there's a, maybe there's a, a sliding scale. But it's a, this is an ongoing problem, and we, we, we've dealt with this seems like every year for the last fifteen years. And, uh, certainly has been ever since I've been on.
Yeah, we've been searching, we've been searching for a long time, trying to find something.
Right. Thank you.
Could we request that the, the two businesses provide us with a list of the number of caregivers they have at specific levels of care? Uh, so how many RNs do they have on staff? And do they have, uh, them on twenty-four hours a day, or is this just during the busy eight hours during the middle of the day?
We can ask anything you'd like to ask, will they tell us?
I think that would be worth looking at, because I think it would be eye-opening to see, um, even at the Loma Opera and Care Facility, our operations staff.
They're, they're regulated by the state, so we don't really have, um, the ability to tell them how they need to staff their resources.
No, I'm not suggesting that.
We might be able to find, they, they might tell us, we can certainly ask.
I just have a, my gut instinct is that you can pay an awful lot of five hundred dollar fines before you have a doctor on site.
Well, I don't think we, they don't need a doctor. But they need some that is just training, so that people learn how to lift people quite from the floor.
Well, that was my question. Is this about the lift? Or is this about the triage and making the decision? You know, that there's something bigger going on. I know when my mother-in-law fell, he was complaining of breathing problems and nobody on staff wanted to say, oh, it's because you're upset, you need to calm down, take deep breaths, relax. And so she was transported and, but they say at the hospital, it's because you're upset, relax, but they weren't willing to take that risk. When my father fell, it was because he had an underlying infection that nobody knew about. What what is your opinion, Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Paul Luizy Fire Chief. Uh, so, you know, I guess it it it's it's certainly very difficult. Um, just to take you back a little bit in history. We worked uh, with the state legislature to create Senate Bill 1373. That was about 2021, roughly. And so that did put a lot of emphasis back on to the facilities to ensure that they had adequate staffing, that they also had staff that was appropriately trained for these lift assists and also in CPR. The emphasis, as you read the bill, is really pushed more towards CPR. But there are those components. It also, they also developed for us, um, for lack of a better term, a complaint line through the state that we can file complaints when we find certain situations where they're understaffed uh, and they're not providing the minimal amount of care that that these patients deserve and pay for. Um, so, you know, we we've taken, um, you know, ever since I think we've started here, a very um, educational approach to this, and it has helped, but it it is slow and and we have people that uh, use the system inappropriately, uh, and will call just for the lift assist reason. We've actually taken it out of our, what we've, what we term in in our business is a nature code. So when somebody calls 911, they they are assigned a nation, nature code, so. Having chest pain, so that's a cardiac disorder. I'm having trouble with the breath, that's a respiratory disorder. We actually have taken lift assists out of that, uh, that uh, nature codes. Because uh, you know, firefighters were human. You get into this mindset of, oh, it's just a lift assist, but in reality, you get there as cardiac arrest, it's chest pain, it's something else. So to take away that, a potential for miss there, we now call them fall injuries. And so the expectation from us on the management side is that they get a full assessment. So blood pressure, you know, everything and everything's evaluated on the patient to ensure what caused the fall injury. You know, a lot of times it is gravity that causes the fall injury, but many times it's other issues, as as you stated, you know, your dad, sometimes it's undiagnosed issues that cause that fall. So we want to make sure that those those patients get the the full uh, the full workup before the decision is made of whether we're just going to lift them and put them back or or what. So it it's a, it's a balancing act, I think, for us. You know, we certainly have a lot of facilities in Goodyear that do calls for this. I think the the complaint line uh, at the state has helped a lot. Um, and we do get some follow-up, but it it it's always that that balancing act of uh, that service that we provide.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I'll take responsibility for this one. I'm legal has for years said, no, there's no way we can address this. And then I had a conversation with Dan Barr, the chief deputy with the AG's office this year, and he kind of directed me towards this lift assist idea and indicated that the AG's office would be supportive of something like that because Litchfield Park isn't the only municipality that's having these issues. And from our discussion and from some of the issues here, it's, it comes down to more, not even just training, but staff. You typically need, you need a minimum of two people uh, to do a lift assist. And a lot of times these places don't have the number or or the staff who are physically capable of of doing that type of of work. The the $500 was put in there as a placeholder, as just an amount that I thought was, you know, looking at something that was high enough to be uh, you know, to dissuade them from from contacting or calling, you know, but not punitive, something that would cover what a basic call would be and stuff like that. But there's other ways that we can, we can look at this other than like Matthew said, if if there's a progressive type step or even, not even a financial requirement, but a a requirement that, okay, if you have X number of lift assist calls, you have to show and document that your employees have have done X, Y, and Z in training. Uh, or that you, you know, let us know what what your your staffing level is. And is it, is it a staffing level issue and stuff like that? Because there's, you know, I I do lift assist every day because I have a a handicapped stepson. Uh, and I just went through a whole eight-hour uh, CPR first aid training that I have to do every three years just to be able to be able to take care of him through the state. And it's intensive as to everything that you you have to to go through with that. Uh, so I think there's, there's ways we could look at that and say, you know, if if there are excessive lift assist for a specific location, specific company. Okay, then we could have requirements, okay? Tell us what your staffing level is and what your training level is for that staff. And, you know, maybe require that they have to do a a a training with the fire department to come in to educate them again and make that as an initial requirement or something like that. But not necessarily just the, it's not that the financial aspect of it wasn't for for trying to raise money or trying to cover costs and stuff. It was trying to come up with something that would dissuade the use of EMS for lift assist calls. We're just, we're trying to, we're trying to figure out a way to influence the way that people do their staffing and how they set these businesses up. So that the cost of, the cost of operating the business is on the business, not on the fire department.
Yeah, they're using the city as a supplement for.
Right, so there, and I think, you know, that if there are things that maybe staff, you go back and look at this, uh, look at ways that, you know, maybe there are things that we can do to require something from the business before we start with this regiment of fines. Because it it isn't, it isn't designed just, it's not designed for raising money. It's designed to try to get them to change the way they're doing business as it relates to this problem.
It's other guy, Council James. I guess I just feel like, you know, we're we're two hours on this and the last three months talking about this and we're really get into the weeds, maybe down the wrong lane on this. And I I think what what Joe just said was, you know, don't focus on the money aspect of it. We're just trying to put something in place. And I I guess I'm sitting here kind of looking at it now saying, okay, so we we can put an ordinance in place. And then if we have to come back because we didn't get it right, we can adjust it like, so we like camelback speed limit, maybe 35 miles an hour is too low. Maybe we need to raise that to 40. I don't know. I'm saying, but I'm just saying.
This is a, you know, this is an area that that uh, this, if we go down this path, it's a, we're breaking new ground in terms of cities trying to deal with this problem. And there are other cities apparently that are working on the same issues. So I think the the concern is that we get enough information to staff so they can draft an ordinance that will be supported by enough council that it gets passed. Because right now, what they brought to us, it was not going to get passed. And so.
How did, how do you feel now?
I feel great.
I feel great.
You know, I can tell you, this would be probably one of the the first, or one of the first types of this program in Arizona. Uh, I did do do some research and found nationally, there are other states and stuff where these types of of programs are in place. So it's not something that's completely new, but it it is a a a trend because I think what we are seeing is that, you know, as businesses are trying to cut costs and stuff, that they're not meeting the needs. And these are for-profit entities. These, you know, there's a big difference between getting a call out to an individual homeowner, uh, as opposed to a for-profit entity that is charging these patients, charging these individuals for that care that that they're supposed to receive. And if they don't have just the the base staffing level necessary to have two or three people to lift somebody off the floor and safely put them back into a a a chair or bed, then then that, I think, is the biggest concern as opposed to cost or or anything like that. It's it's care of the individuals.
That's why I think, you know, the financing is is not the the point. I think we all agree that we need to find a way to stop them to do it. And I think the only way to do that is to attack their license. If they're such, that would have to go through the state, whatever regulatory board that does that. If they're using EMTs as their fallback for, instead of staffing themselves on a regular way, they have to get approval through the state or the or whoever is renewing their license to be able to operate. And they don't get their license renewed to operate if they can have so many of these failures. There has to be something larger than a a $500 fine. That's not going to pay. These people aren't, these four large for-profit groups, $500 is a mosquito on a they're they're not going to.
I can reach back out to the, you know, to Dan Barr and the AG's office and see if there's interest from a larger perspective. You know, we're trying to to address and deal with the the individual circumstances for for the city. But yeah, I mean, ultimately, the the licensure would be the way to go, but I don't think that we have that that authority. We have the authority to be able to impose business regulations and and costs and expenses for certain uh, services that are above and beyond what is normally contemplated. Um, but that's a conversation we can have on a on a bigger level, you know, especially as Mr. Barr had mentioned that there there are other municipalities having these issues.
Yeah, I'd be all for us putting together what we need to with the city with the idea of taking it to the next level that can really create some activity that's going to make something happen. Instead of fines that are going to be minor in the big picture of what's going on here. We're trying to create change. And to create change, we have to do something that's going to make them react to what's happening here.
I don't think that what I'm trying to say has been made clear, because I think there's two aspects to a lift assist call. And Chief, if you would tell me if I'm correct or not, I would appreciate that. But it seems to me that that one part is the lift and then the second aspect is the triage. What what needs to happen next? And I have a, I I'd love to know statistically, how many of these people do you arrive and find them still on the floor? Or have they already been lifted up and now you're there to triage? Do you have any feel for that?
Mayor Council, Paul Luizy Fire Chief. Uh, typically, the the patient is left in place. And so then we'll we'll arrive and and find them, you know, on the floor or wherever. Uh, typically, they're not moved again prior to us getting there. So, you know, again, as I stated, don't get the full evaluation and then we'll decide whether or not we're going to lift them back up or transport them.
And who makes that decision now?
Typically, it's the most senior paramedic on scene. And, you know, we obviously as paramedics, uh, were certified, we work under a physician's license, but we have a scope practice that are outlined in our guidelines and protocols. And so, you know, it depends on where the patient kind of fits in, but they'll make that determination uh, on scene. More than likely, our goal is to transport the patient, but there are, but there are certainly times where uh, they just truly need help back up.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
So, is there any more input that council wants to make the staff? You can take this, chew on it and see where you want to go with it.
Maybe just one last question, Mayor.
Absolutely.
When you said there's very few cities and townships that have this, are there any? Or are we going to be the first one? Are we going to be headliners by making?
In Arizona, I I'm unaware of any other municipalities in in Arizona. But I I can look again and see if if we can find some additional information, but.
This is a topic of concern, but it's not something, nobody's ever figured out how to deal with it. Yes, Councilman Donahue.
Actually, and and this almost seems like it, it doesn't make sense to this conversation, but Ron, I think you, you know, with Barb at at a facility and Lisa and I, we all experienced this. My case, it was Hacienda del Rey. They have a terrible time staffing for elder care all over the place. So the other issue is, you know, they're understaffed, I'm certain. And I literally had a situation where I was called to transport my aunt from Hacienda to the hospital. Watch that start to happen and back. And it wasn't because of a fee, but my my only concern again is that, you know, we're we're talking about training. And that's awesome if they have the people to train. Um, you know, the the sta- the staffing situation for a lot of those places is is low. Um, and and in Michigan, I will tell you, I have a mother, I think I told you this before, who called 911 so many times that they told her she would be charged. So I don't know how how they were going to facilitate that, but she did it from home. So I, you know, I I don't know, obviously. Um, Chief will tell you, they don't probably have a system like that. But anyway, I'm just concerned about the understaffing.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Just one, one quick thing. I know we're, you're trying to move on. Remember the history of this. Hacienda came to us and asked for a significant increase in the density of their patients. We had been beating on them for quite a while about this lithicist problem. For quite a few number of months before they came to us, their lithicist went down to almost nothing. They figured out a way to to address this problem and to handle it in-house. As soon as they got their density approved by this council, their numbers skyrocketed again. They have the ability to address this and to fix it. It's shown by the numbers before and after uh, their request for increased density. They have just chosen not to do it. And I think that's a disservice to everybody in that facility. I think this, we we have, we have talked about this for years. We've done nothing except talk about it. This is our first chance to do something, as Councilman James said. And also is something that we can always tweak as we go through this process. If it doesn't work, if we say something else, we need to change it, we can do that. But we need to do something to get this ball moving somehow. So I'm massively in favor of of what's proposed here, just to see how it works and see if it doesn't solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for staff? All right, we'll go on to the next item, which is C, Certified Local Government and Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Council on the lighter side, we're going to talk about CLG. When I say CLG, I mean Certified Local Government. And HPC, HPC, of course, is Historic Preservation Commission. And what is a CLG? Certified Local Government. There are currently 29 CLG cities and one county in the state of Arizona. A few benefits of being a CLG, of course, is grant opportunities. That's one of the biggest things of being a CLG. And also state resources, programming, that kind of thing, knowledge, access. That being said, though, we'll get into that more, but grant opportunities are very much affected by what you're doing, what the project is, and how much of the historical nature is still there. Just a few, a few unique historic properties in the city. Obviously, the organization house, which was the first building of Wigwam. The St. Thomas Aquinas Mission Church, and of course, the Litchfield Homestead. But again, as I said, when you start getting into modifying these buildings, like, for example, the historical site is intentioned to restore the Litchfield Homestead is certainly a good one. But it also affects how much grant funding it's eligible for because you're changing the nature of the building. So that's something to be considered. An HPC. The first consideration to become a CLG is you have to have an HPC. HPC, again, is an Historic Preservation Commission. An HPC could be established via city ordinance. A historic district requires 80% of the homes to qualify. That being said, a historic district can be as broad as an entire city or as narrow as one block. Historic preservation can also be individual buildings, again, such as the Litchfield House. As I said, modifications to City Hall, Litchfield House can affect their historic registration ability. City Hall itself is very historic. It's the original home office of Goodyear. That being said, there's been a lot of modifications over the years. There is a lot of fear and misunderstanding of historic districts. A few months ago, this was discussed with P and Z. And to be honest, there was a whole lot of interest. A few months ago, this was discussed with P and Z and to be honest, there was a whole lot of interest in it. And my opinion, why is because again, there's a fear of what historic districts mean. People hear historic districts and they automatically think you're going to tell me what color I can paint my front door, right? And that's not true. It can be that tight. As I have the next point, historic districts can be as loose or as tightly as desired. You can make it where it's about the color of your window, it's about the color you can paint your house, you can do that, or you can keep it very loose. You can also make it where you can take homes in and out of the stroke registry voluntarily. Or it has to be approved by the commission to ever take them out. Again, it all depends how loose or how tight you want to make it. Okay. Like the national registry, that comes into play too. Again, how tight or how loose do you want this? It affects what you can do with the facility. HPC is not, nor replaces the historical society. Two very different things. If this was something that council would like to pursue, the next steps would be a text amendment of the zoning code. Adoption of an HPC ordinance. Recruitment of a five member panel to serve, again, this will be one we want to have a council member serve on, as touched on earlier. We'd want to survey and inventory potential properties. Seek with SHPO, S-H-P-O, support to become a CLG. Pursue preservation efforts and of course hold regular meetings with HPC. That doesn't mean they have to be held every month. But again, looking at properties that you want to put in, as you guys know, there's a lot of historic homes in Litchfield Park. In the old part of the city. That being said, a lot of them have been modified over the years. Is that a bad thing? That depends who you ask, of course. So there's a lot of different facets to this. Again, it depends how big you want to make it, how broad, how tight, how narrow do you want to make this process? Maybe for us, we just started out with City Hall and Litchfield House, but again, you're modifying both. That comes into play. I think the biggest question, first of all, is CLG something the city wants to pursue? And if CLG is something we want to pursue, then we need to look into establishing an HPC. But again, it does affect what you can do with properties. So a lot of different elements to this. So that's just a, a very high overview. But that's what, is there a question of the council of, again, of us becoming a CLG? And so we move forward in the process.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Donahue.
So, this goes back to, I know the mayor and Lisa and I were all at the historic society had the president of SHPO. Come and speak year or two, a year ago. And, you know, uh, when we were done, Lisa and I went right up to her saying, oh my goodness, we want some more information. We since then had their staff person come in. Adriana, I think her name was, she was awesome and very specific about they're, they're not, they're not strict. And, you know, obviously if there's a historic home and it needs to have its windows modified for, you know, uh, insulation or whatever, that's fine. So since that time, we've also had their architect and some of their staff people come up to the hilltop to view that home. Um, we've had some other meetings. We currently have five people that are willing to sit on that commission that are very qualified. So I'm obviously. Whining a little bit because I will be off council by the time this happens, but I think this is critically important. To Litchfield Park as we move forward. Um, obviously we're developing the hilltop, which is going to become a historic, you know, um, cultural area. I think we start with the six properties that we have that are commercial, the churches and the. But I think this would really be something that we really need to embrace because we are, we do have historic, history here, we are historic. And this just gives us a little polish and I was very impressed with their staff and very impressed with how. Practical they are. They're not strict about everything. Um, and the funding could be amazing, especially on the hilltop. So I just want to cheer for this and say that, you know, we've actually moved a little bit forward from this, as I mentioned. People like Meredith Stuki and Mary Dixon, who previously worked for us are willing to be on that panel. Um, we have plenty of people to do that. So I would like to see us do this. I don't think this will hurt us. I was also disappointed in the P and Z meeting initially, but then Lisa Hagerty, the executive director of, um, the. PW Litchfield got up and gave a eloquent, eloquent description of why this would be important. So. Um, I, I, I heavily vote for this and as I mentioned, we've already, we've already done some of this work. Anyway.
I, I have to admit that I, I'd have to see some, you know, some clear cut benefits before I would be. Much interested in doing this because it, it's another level of bureaucracy we're creating in the city and. Unless it's going to bring some really special benefit to specific properties. And not have any detriment to other properties. Uh, it's hard to get excited about it, but.
There was one thing that surprised me when we spoke to the gal with the boat. Um, she was so specific that she said, it doesn't even have to be houses or buildings. One thing that's historic in Litchfield Park is our palm tree, orange tree, palm tree, orange tree. And we could get a grant for replacing dying palm trees or dying orange trees. Because that could be designated as a historic aspect of Litchfield Park. So there's, there's opportunities in grant funding that are out there that are pretty significant. And, uh, when, in talking with the gal, she said, there's a lot of money that has not been used because cities are not. Taking advantage of this.
Yeah, again, I, I would like to see something, you know, more, you know, specific. It says, these, this is the kind of funding we could get or these are the specific benefits that is going to flow out of this.
Would you like to meet with her?
Well, I think I listened to her once before, she first came out here, you know, and I walked away and said, it's like. It's like a cloud. The cloud's really pretty and then you start trying to get, where's the substance of this cloud and, you know, I, I just, I don't. I would need to see what, give me some specific examples that, that would bring us benefit. Maybe they would replace our palm trees, I don't know. I can tell you that ADWR would be opposed to it because we already violated their rules, so. You know, it, it's, may not be that quite as easy. So that's all my only comment is just, you know, bring us the benefits before we're going to take on. Take on the, you know, opportunity. We're going to create this, it's going to take work by staff and commit, commitment from council. So if we're going to do this, tell us what the benefits are. And that, if we can benefit from it and there's no detriment, then fine.
Mayor, so I, I think who you heard was Catherine, the president, but Lisa and I have heard further and that was her staff person. And I was just the opposite. I came away from there very excited. So I just think there's, there's a little more content that maybe. You've not heard, maybe it's worth her coming and speaking to the council. You know.
Getting staff, or getting staff to brief us on the specifics. In other words, this, this is, uh, this briefing is says, you know, there's grants. Well, give me, give me some examples of what realistically we could get on a grant. Give me something specific, not just that there's this thing out here that, well, we're going to get these grants. We, we haven't had very much grant, really anything significant on grants since we got the basketball court refurbished. Or Jackie Robinson. And, you know, that didn't really depend upon the historic, the historic nature of either one of those areas, so. If you can bring us something specific, then I think, you know, I mean, council's going to look, if we've got something we can do that. Will be beneficial for our city and beneficial our residents, that's great. You know, particularly if we can do it in a way that does not have a negative impact. Because I, I can tell you that if you designated my house as a historical structure, I wouldn't be real happy with you. Now, maybe I should be, but I, you know, I would need some education ahead of time. Yes, sir.
We can do that. We'll get you some.
And I, I would say to Councilmember Donahue, I mean, I, I can, I can hear the passion and I. If, if my two fellow council members are passionate and say that it's a good idea, then we, we should explore that. But that being said, the one benefit that I saw was grants. So, you know, when you want a grant, now you got to get a grant writer. We got to figure out what percentage of the grants. You know, the actual grant the grant writer is going to take. So I just, if, 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 if somebody could come in and say, yeah, there's. Three hundred thousand dollars worth of available funds out there and if you apply for, you know, there's a potential hundred and fifty thousand that could come in that could directly benefit. Then I think it would be, but, yeah, I could see, you know, confusion when somebody says, well, why did you guys create a, a historical. Preservation committee? I thought we had a historical society, you know, so, yeah, I, I, I think, I, I think what I'm trying to say is I agree with both of you in this.
We'll get you some information.
Okay. Does that wrap up our work study?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, is there a, uh, we don't need an executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn their work study? All those favorite, please say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Anybody need to break before we go into the regular session? Oh, all right. So, we call the regular meeting of the city council to order. Uh, first item of business is mayor council members' reports on starting events. So we'll start with, uh.
Um, just been busy with the historical society and part of the heritage center, thank you, um, met with Matthew and. Working on trying to get the lease approved and make, get some movement there and that's about all I have right now. I'll be attending the Olive Ria, uh, dinner tomorrow night with you, um, and looking forward to that.
All right, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this, uh, historical society lease has been an ongoing thing. So I'm glad to hear that you're getting close to wrapping it up. That's been a. It's like you step in something and you can't, you can't get away from it. But anyway, good job.
All right, Councilman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one thing I wanted to share and I, I don't see Kyle here tonight, so I'll trust that you'll pass this along. One interesting thing that when we were at the, uh, cities and towns meeting over at the Biltmore. And I'm going to try to give you the Reader's Digest version of the story was, Biltmore just redid one of their golf courses and they had to plant. Uh, three hundred plus trees as mandated by the city of Phoenix. Um, anyways, they had to bring in some national arborists. And, uh, something that I found interesting that they shared from these national panel of arborists was that the city of Phoenix lost forty percent of its pine trees. Last year and they're on pace to leave another forty percent of their pines this year. And the root cause determined by the arborist was that the, uh, overnight temperatures are not getting below ninety anymore. And those trees are not able to successfully cool off and that, and I think that if, as this concrete, and I'm not talking about climate change or anything like that. I would say that if you look at the concrete that's. Coming around us that, and then you just start driving around the city or you look at, you know, the holes on the Wigwam Golf Course. There's pine trees dying like crazy. And so I just wanted to make sure that, um. Probably going to be cutting a lot of pine trees down over, over the time. And I don't know if we have a, you know, tree replacement plan in place. But I would imagine it wouldn't involve pine trees because it's two summers in a row where the overnight temps here in Litchfield Park have stayed above. Stayed in the nineties for too much trade. So I just wanted to pass that along.
Uh, Councilman James, you're spot on. Um, you can drive around the city, you can see the pine trees that are dying. Me and Kyle recently had this discussion. We had the trees looked at. Is there bacteria or something in the roots? What's going on with these trees? And you're right, there, there isn't a mole, there's some parasite, you're exactly right. And we are losing a lot of pine trees. We just are. There's several down this street if you go this way. There's a big one, a long dicer that we're going to have to take out. And it is, you're right, it's, it is killing the pine trees. It's a hundred percent right. Couple of weeks ago, Chief Luizy had a, uh, dinner with the chief. Dinner and my wife got to go to that and just raved about it. So it was a great experience, get to tour the firehouse, uh, speak with the staff. And just another great thing that you and the organization do for our residents. So thank you.
Uh, Councilman Donahue.
Um, I just want to credit Tricia with two awesome events. I think that Retro Bite, um, council or vice mayor. Faith and I were there. I thought it was awesome. There were a couple hundred people and they certainly having fun. So that was a change of theme. And then the farmer's market. I've, I've attended once and I've had at least five people reach out to me saying, bravo. So, good job, Tricia.
All right, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, Nelson Mayor, thank you.
Uh, I just have a couple of things. First is, uh, we celebrated the Navy's birthday, uh, a few days ago and. Would like to, uh, extend a personal invitation to everyone on the council to stop in sometime for these birthday celebrations. They only take ten or fifteen minutes and. Uh, it's important to recognize the services as we go throughout the year and the fact that they're here keeping our country safe and sound. So. Uh, the other thing I want to mention is the Hall of Fame, which, uh, Councilman Barry Watson mentioned in passing. Uh, Olive Ria had established a Hall of Fame and then each of the cities that are within the Olive Ria District, uh, are able to nominate somebody. To be recognized in this Hall of Fame. Presentation and it's a, it's really a group they're putting together. And, uh, we've had different, we've had, this, this is the third year. The first year, I think Sonny Colbroth was our nominee. And he was recognized for all the work that he's done with rec, with recreation in this area. Uh, last year was Dr. Brainerd was recognized just for his contributions to our community. Uh, in many cases, he was, he was the doctor of choice for many members of our community, even not for things much broader than, than orthopedics. Uh, and this year we have nominated Charlie Salem. I don't know how many people know Charlie Salem, but. Uh, Charlie is a, is a old time, longtime West Valley resident. He actually was the mayor of Goodyear for, I don't know, eight or ten years, twelve years. Uh, was instrumental in setting up a lot of the things that, that the city of Goodyear does and the way that they do it. And a very important part in their history. Uh, he was the first mayor for the city of Litchfield Park Incorporated. Was, well, he was, he was part of the council that set up the basic structure that still is the structure of our city today. So he had a very important. Uh, hand in the way that, that the city of Litchfield Park was developed. So we're, we're recognizing him on Thursday night and he will be inducted into the Olive Ria Hall of Fame, so.
I tagged on that he was a teacher for many years too.
He was a teacher.
A lot of lives.
Yeah, he's a land developer. He's done, I mean, just the things that Charlie's been involved in are just, uh, you know, they're too long to list. It's. He's a really interesting person and, and now resides, you know, he has resided at Litchfield for a long, long time, but I think he's at La Loma now. So, that's my report. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything you would like to add beyond what you gave us?
Mayor and Council, I do not. Reports in your packet. Welcome. Any questions?
All right, any questions for council? Councilman James.
One comment, um, uh, you know, about eleven thirty, uh, at night at our last council meeting. Um, I know the vice mayor and I passionately asked for you to, you know, get some roads open in the city center and I. Drove the road the other day off of the roundabout and, uh, of course forgot that when you get told Litchfield, you can only make right turns, so.
I, I did likewise, actually.
So, but I, I think it was great to, it, it was great to drive and actually see and see the progress that's being made and credit to. Randy, to John before him from, yeah, so.
Yeah, that's right. The, the inside of the park is really, and the inside of the square is looking really good.
Yeah, so thanks for, thank you for making that happen.
Okay, uh, with that, we will move on then to our agenda. Uh, there's a call to the community. I don't have any requests to speak, correct? So we're going to go on to our presentation section. There are two proclamations that are in your, uh, packet. One is about energy efficiency and the other is about, uh, United Responder Community Month. Uh, both of them are recognizing important, important activities in our, in our, uh, community and that hopefully you'll take a look at those. And those proclamations will go out. Uh, then we'll go on to our, our reports, public safety reports. Fire chief has been here for a while.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Paul Luizy, Fire Chief. Uh, so in your packet, you have, uh, your report for September. So, uh, eighty-seven calls for service. Uh, seventy-two of those were EMS, so about eighty-three percent. Uh, we did have one structural fire. On, uh, Cascadia, South Cascadia, uh, circle. Uh, so talking to the fire investigator, uh. Uh, of record for that, uh, incident. And that was an electrical fire that was in the attic. Uh, nice job by the crews getting up there real quick, getting that knocked down, um, and stopping that spread. Um, unfortunately unable to keep the family in the home. Uh, we had a pulpit meter in, uh, gas to the home as well. Uh, we were just, uh, nervous about, uh, uh, that fire extending, you know, if, if it's left unchecked for a while. So. I think they made the right call there. Uh, and then with regards to the assisted living facilities, uh, thirteen calls at La Loma. And twenty at Las Cruces, uh, last month. Uh, we've responded back to both of those facilities just to have them check over their calls for service. There was, you know, based on tonight's, uh, discussion, there was one lift assist that occurred at Las Cruces. Uh, otherwise, uh, if you have any questions for me, I, I am available for those questions.
Questions from council?
I just, thank you for answering my questions.
Yeah, absolutely. Anytime.
So no questions, just thank you, thank you in general from the council. Let, let your guys know, we appreciate the service they give our residents.
I do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Sergeant Emmett. I, I'm sure I butchered it a little bit. I apologize.
Always. So Sergeant Emmett, uh, Avondale PD, uh, for the month of September, we had. Uh, for the month of September, we had four hundred and fifteen calls for service. Uh, out of the, it was seventy-two percent were officer generated, so traffic stops, contacting special people, business checks, et cetera. Twenty-eight percent were citizen driven or calls for service. Uh, we had sixteen community contacts. The four hundred and fifteen calls for service was an increase of three eighty-three the month before. Uh, we've increased our traffic. That's been our main enforcement that we've been really working on the last couple of months. We had seventy-seven for August. We increased it to a hundred and thirty-eight traffic stops for September, and still increasing this month as well. Uh, our citations went from twenty-one citations in August up to forty citations for September. Business checks, we had fifty-five business checks compared to fifty for August. And then fifty-four Speed Zone detail who were out there monitoring traffic and doing nothing but battle compared to thirty-nine the month before. Any questions?
Questions, Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we got a, we got a mess going on over here at uh Indian School in and uh if that one lane that's coming north, um it it just, it takes forever. Is there any, anything that can be done to try to mitigate some of that congestion there?
Um, probably the best thing, you know, I I've driven through it quite a bit, and I know it's pretty frustrating. Our, my office is at the Community College there, so I end up taking Osborne around because it's so hard to get through there. Um, they do have an officer that uh works off duty there every day. You usually see his personal vehicle with the lights on right there. His job is to uh work that light to keep it manually, to keep that traffic flowing through. Sometimes it's harder, I mean, I've done a lot of duty down there, just depending, because you still got to keep east and west going as well, so. Um, something we can try to get with the off duty officer each day, or if we see it really backed up, make sure they are working that light. And uh, let them know that, see if they can work it more.
Yeah, it's just a real nightmare to, and we have that to look forward to for a while.
Right, I know, and we've noticed it, and I know like even today, we actually had a two rear and accident because people trying to butt up there and beat the light, you know, to get through there, because they didn't want to sit through another cycle.
And then there's always a few people that won't let the other guy in, you know, it's
Right.
Thank you.
One of the other issues there is that we're going from uh on, if you're headed eastbound on Indian School, there's two lanes to turn, but because of the restriction on the northbound side of the road of Dicer, excuse me, it's, you go two lanes and turn into one. So, I don't know if we're closing that or fixing, adjusting, or getting rid of one of the turn lanes temporarily.
You know, I'd have to, I'd have to check, I'd gotta get out there tomorrow and check with the, sometimes the traffic control changes daily with what they're actually working on. So, uh, but I go there tomorrow and kind of see what their plan is as far as uh what they're doing.
I I was, I was gonna say, sorry, Keith, because the answers to those questions, so. One, you're, you're gonna be able to use a second, so we'll get them. So, so my only comment is um to that point. Going east on Indian School's bad, going north on Dicer, it's bad. Eventually, it'll go one lane going south on Dicer. And the last time we went south on Dicer, that's when the traffic was dumping into there. And I, and right after that, uh, when I made that comment, it went right back to two lanes and nobody, and I, and and I saw the officer was there looking for, so, but eventually, we we will have that problem coming when.
It too will be fixed.
But no, from that one, you brought that up, um, it does switch back. I made the officers aware to be on Fairway Drive there, what they're trying to cut through there, looking for computers trying to go around. So, we'll be on top of that one, that does switch back.
Thank you. Good. All right, thank you. Let your officers know we appreciate the service they give our, was continuous, you know, they're, they're a great presence in our community, and we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, that brings us on to our staff report. Uh, Ms. Peterson, do you have a report you would like to give us beyond what's in the packet, or do you want to highlight a few things that are in the packet?
Um, there's um nothing in particular to highlight. It is all in your packet, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are.
We still have money in the bank, and we've gotten, we've gotten our new relationship with the the bond council formalized, and we now have a laddered bond program in place.
Correct. Still have money in the bank, and we wired them the six point two million that they've already started investing.
Great. Any questions on finance? Okay. We have a contamination plume update and a capital improvement projects update. You have information in your packet. Um, all of that. If there's, I know there are questions about what's going on at Dicer and Indian School. Um, if there are specific questions about the contamination that's not answered by the packet, you're welcome to bring that up now, otherwise, we're going to talk about Indian School and Dicer and other, any other capital projects people want to ask about. Mr. Dresky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the PJ uh plume update, uh, it's in your packet. The only update that's not in there is on the twelfth of November, there's a CAG update. CAG stands for Community Action Group, which is an invitation to all the stakeholders, city of Goodyear, city of uh Litchfield, city of Phoenix, Avondale, Cameracopa County, uh, so it's going to be held on the twelfth at the Goodyear Rec Center from five thirty to seven thirty, and it's a pretty big event. Great presentations, updates from all the contamination, uh remediation, all that fun technical stuff will be put together in presentation by EPA, so wanted to let everybody know about that. We have it up on the website and on social media, let the residents know as well.
Do we ever get any citizens to actually go to the CAGs? Is it, they used, we're used to it, I'm just curious if that's kept up.
Uh, we have them here every year, Mr. Mayor. Um, I've been to the last two, I haven't seen anybody. Uh, this year, uh, they are going to also have a virtual. Uh, it's a phone call, it's not a, there's no visual, they don't have a camera, but it'll be live audio, so you can hear the entire presentation after they're in person. I'm assuming, I'm going to give the benefit of the doubt, that people are listening to the presentation not in person.
Okay, and I'm with the Loop PFAS issue, have we reached agreement with the government on where they can drill, or is that still pending?
Uh, good question, Mr. Mayor. I actually just got an update last week. Uh, it looks like the Department of Defense legal, and uh, our side has agreed on the language. We finalized the draft IGA, uh, sent it back for their signature. Final approval and signature, and uh we're hoping to get that anytime, so finally, after about a year and a half, have worked out the language.
It's perfect. All right.
Capital improvements, I guess I'm starting with uh Dicer and Indian School. Uh, is, are there any other questions on any other capital projects I can get through quicker? Uh, so Dicer and Indian School, uh, it is a bit of a mess out there. It's a good organized mess. Um, down to one lane northbound and eastbound, or I'm sorry, westbound. The northbound traffic um is very congested because there's also a construction project to the south of our project that is uh adding to the headache that uh unfortunately, the city of Avondale um approved several traffic control devices for the same timeframe. Uh, traffic control restrictions, so there's, if anybody was out there this morning, there was actually a taper on the inside median, moving everybody to the to the outside, and then as it got closer to our project, you had to move back to the outside, so. That was a very interesting one this morning. Uh, so, the current traffic control setup, which is a majority of the two lan- two lanes on each side instead of uh either all three or just one. So, we wanted to get more, most of the work out of the way as fast as possible, so we allowed them to take the two lanes of traffic. That is going to be up, they're going to start placing AV and GeoGrid and asphalt. The first week of uh November should be paved in those two lengths. After that, we thought to having two lanes of traffic open and the one median sized lane, so it'll be even more efficient at that time. So, the overall schedule is anticipated to be complete by the second week of uh December, and that's punch, that's everything, that's punch items. We're anticipating. So, I'll entertain any questions on Dicer and Indian School?
Questions?
Second week of December or November?
Second week of December, of November will have the paving done that's closed down right now, and then we'll, we'll switch traffic. And they'll work on the median sized paving, and that'll take between about about three weeks, so we'll get into first, possibly second week of December for that to be finished.
So, exactly how much are we going to pave? Are we going to pave both north and north, southbound, or only northbound?
Mr. Mayor, just the northbound for now, the north, all three lanes up to Las Cruces, which is the entrance to the hacienda, and then the roughly about the north two lanes of Indian School, because the city of Avondale's city limit starts the south, like five feet of the first lane, so we're around the city limits.
So, they're, they're putting it, they're, they're cutting out the asphalt right now in the intersection. Is that, is that how far we're going to pave down as to where they're cutting that asphalt?
Yes, sir. Out to the, the, basically the whole north east of the actual intersection, so the whole thing into the middle intersection.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Anything, anything else you want to bring about, about special projects that have particular merit?
Mr. Mayor, and I don't know if Randy will bring it up, but uh the phasing on uh Litchfield Square will move into the middle of next month. We'll open remaining streets, uh, we'll open uh La Loma, Dicer, and Honeysuckle, a part of La Loma, next to the restroom will stay closed because there's still going to have layering equipment and other remaining construction items, but by the middle of next month, we'll have thirty of all the streets open.
Great. Any questions, Council? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Next item is special projects update. Do you have something you would like to inform us of, or do we have questions in council on the special projects, which I think is mainly Litchfield Square?
No questions.
Questions? Anything new you want to surprise us of, that we don't, that you don't think we might have missed in the packet?
Mayor, Council, uh, former mayor, future council, good evening, Randy Proch, your planning director. Happy to answer your any questions. Uh, my packet should be fairly comprehensive, and Keith has added on that uh most of the roads will be open November fifteenth, just under one month from today.
When, when will we be, will we, will we be able to use uh the park for activities?
So, great question, yeah, and I'll supplement the conversation. Most of the park on November fifteenth will also be available. It'll only be that, let's call it northwest quadrant, where the future playground is yet to be installed in the bathroom features. But everything else, you know, the amphitheater grass area, the southern lawn, with the, you know, future amenities and the furniture, that'll be open as well, one month from yesterday.
So, if there was an event, we could plan events on the grass, starting in, roughly November fifteenth?
Mayor, that is up to your discretion and uh Tricia's recommendation as well, as far as any sort of programming events, knowing that we need to uh figure out a temporary bathroom situation since uh that won't be open, since that will still be under construction.
Okay, so the bathroom won't be ready until when?
Uh, we we hope uh mid-January is what has been uh pushed out and advertised as far as everything done, punchless done. Art wheels commencing through the park.
All right, thank you.
Hopefully, we can run the Christmas parade through there.
Through the park?
Yeah.
I don't know, I have talked to Tricia, she's the boss on that.
Uh, we'll certainly get with Randy and see if that's a viable option.
That's a good way of saying no.
To the next, to the next council meeting at the amphitheater.
Is, do you have, are you making any plans for, to use the park yet? Any schedule?
So, it's kind of dependent on when we're planning to do the full opening, that the playground and the restroom are available. Uh, right now, the big main event that we're looking to transition over there is the Spring Festival. So, right now, our intent is to keep all of our events through the January gathering still as they have been, and then we would do a big corral in the spring. After the grand opening of the park, which presumably will be changed over here early February.
Good, that's right. Any other questions? Thank you. Next item is, well, with the magistrate court report is in your packet. So, the next item is the consent agenda. Item eight A through E. Is there anybody or anyone on the council who wants to take any item off of the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to adopt items eight A through D? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, they were adopted as presented. Business items, uh, we have a a discussion about an amendment to the council meeting schedule for next year. Uh, this, this amendment is to change the normal meeting nights from the first Wednesday and the third Wednesday, with the third Wednesday being our actual council meeting. And the first Wednesday being held for work studies if we needed as a separate, separate work study. To change that to uh Thursdays, basically, so two Thursdays a month, either the first Thursday and the third Thursday, or the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday. Uh, I'm going to, the, and the the Thursdays are helpful for me in my schedule, and that's one of the reasons why it's coming up. Uh, it also is helpful, if we can move this to the fourth Thursday, then it gets a little bit more time for preparation of these reports and particularly the finance report will have all the numbers in for sure. So, I don't know if, if going to a fourth Thursday is really a problem for anybody who's currently on the council, or any of you future council members. If not, then uh
Uh, Mayor Council.
Something this would be, uh, we, we would need a motion. What's, do you have something you would add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a few quick notes on this.
Okay.
Um, like anything, it's more complicated than it seems. So, Carter just said the same thought I had, so first, we were looking at, it's hard for me to say, the third Thursday. But we had two council members that had conflicts the third Thursday. And then we were looking at the fourth Thursday, and as Carter just said, one condition we run into, well, the fourth Thursday is Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving is on the fourth Thursday. So, in November, of course, we could just move the council member, the council meeting to another date, that's not a problem. We probably canceled December anyway, because again, the fourth Thursday would probably fall between Christmas and New Year's. So, that's one thing to be considered. Also, it could, depending on when the legal cities falls. But of course, the biggest thing is trying to make seven people's schedules. So, of course, now on the third Wednesday, we can do the fourth, we can do the fourth Thursday, we do have a, a incoming council member that could have a conflict with four Thursdays. Depending, so that's something to be aware of as well. Like anything, there's pros and cons. I will say having it on the fourth Thursday, exactly as the mayor said, it does give more time for reports. Uh, like it is, Paige is usually pretty crunched, trying to get the finance report done in time, just because of the way that things come back. So, that would be helpful, but again, there are complications again with the fourth Thursday, such as some current scheduling conflicts, and again, holidays.
Okay, so is there a motion to move the uh meeting schedule for twenty twenty-four from the first and third Wednesday to the second and fourth Thursday?
Yeah, it should say twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, so my notes, this says twenty twenty-four. Should be twenty twenty-five.
So, Mr. Mayor, we'll keep, we'll keep the November meeting as is. We don't have a December meeting, and then starting January, we're talking about going second and fourth.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, starting January twenty, twenty twenty-five.
Just to be clear, the second would be a backup day if we needed it. Your primary would be on the fourth, just like currently, we reserve this being first.
Just like we use them now.
And we see, uh, when we see conflicts coming down the line, like maybe League or Thanksgiving next year, we'll talk about it a few months in advance and pivot.
All right, we'll just, yeah, we'll just move our meeting in November or December, so.
It's turkey.
All right, yeah, we have turkey dinner.
Sounds good.
So, is, is there a motion to make that change? Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we have amended our schedule. Uh, next item is an executive session on uh items A, B, C, and D. Uh, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Somewhat.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in, we're going to go into executive session.
Wow.
What are you doing here?
I think you deserve it.
You said you didn't see us again, I didn't know it was going to be fine.
I neither.
All right, so is there a motion to adjourn?
To move. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.